So, let's call meeting order. If you hear one.
Evening.
A special meeting, which is called on air to, um, uh, discuss and make and make a decision on the setting of the tax rate for the year. So I have a brief agenda here in front of me that was on the board in downstairs. So I'm gonna go through that. Uh, first on the agenda is additions and deletions. Now, you had additions-
We have a public safety-
Safety report.
Public safety report.
Okay, so we're gonna add that. Anyone else have anything else? Additions and deletions. Okay, seeing none, why don't we have a motion for that addition?
So moved.
Second. Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, so that is gonna be added. Uh, we have to have a moment for a public comment. Is there anybody, a member of the public, who wishes to comment on the agenda tonight? It's not on the agenda tonight, and there isn't any. Alrighty, moving right along. So, uh, let's get right into why we're here. Um, setting the tax rate up. So our city treasurer has handed out, uh, three pieces of paper here for us. Uh, several of us have met with Mary ahead of time, I being one of them. And, um, I think we all have a pretty good idea of where we are. But let's have a rundown from Mary about, um, what she has and what's before us and what are our choices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so, a little bit of a change from what I had sent you earlier. Lynn goes through all of my numbers and finds the little mistakes that I've made. So, those have been corrected. Um, one in the unassigned fund balance calculation, Lynn made the correction for me, a slight change there. Um, and also, when I was looking at last year's, I recorded, I think I recorded the, um, tax assessment on a hundred and fifty thousand wrong, right? It should be three twenty-five? Yes, we changed that. So when you see the change in, from prior year, you'll note that. Um, make sure I have everything. So, I'm gonna get right to it. When I start working on this over the weekend, I made some changes to the unassigned fund balance. Normally, I would ask you ahead of time to release a couple of restrictions that we've had on funds, but because we didn't have a meeting right before, I went ahead and did those transactions, those, I removed those restrictions, so I'm going to ask you tonight to ratify those changes. Um, they're ones that we would normally do. So, um, last year, we set aside five hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars and twenty-six cents. That was prior year fund balance. So when I was doing, preparing for the calculation, I removed that. So I would ask if, um, can we do them both together, or do you wanna do them?
Why don't we do them separately, just to make sure-
Do them separately? Okay.
It's clean.
Okay, so, I, I went ahead and did that so that the numbers would be accurate for this year, so I would ask that you would ratif- not approve, but approve or and/or ratify that, removing that prior year fund balance.
Okay, so the motion would be to ratif- or, uh, remove the prior year fund balance. The net number was five seventy-four.
We have to suspend the rules.
Uh, yeah, why don't we suspend the rules, take it up to time?
Second.
Alrighty, uh, there's a motion to suspend, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, motion passes. And a motion to-
Ratify.
Remove the prior year fund balance. And again, if you could, uh, five seventy-four-
Five hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars and twenty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Alrighty, it's been motion and second, debate. Anyone seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And the other one that I did last year, when I, when we were presenting the tax rate, the Department of Public Works had, had a hundred, over a hundred thousand in pavement marking, that they weren't able to spend from FY twenty-four, so we rolled it to FY twenty-five. So when we got, when I get to the end of this year, we only spent forty-three thousand. So I, I went ahead, I know we're on a tight budget this year, so I removed that. It was sixty-eight thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay, sixty-eight thousand, five twenty, ninety-four.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And a motion to remove the pavement markings, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, debate, Alderman Gillis.
Um, this, this is from last year?
Yeah, it was from FY twenty-four rolled over to twenty-five, and it wasn't spent in twenty-five. We have a budget for, we actually have a budget in twenty-five that is now in the Capital Reserve Fund, and, so there are funds, if that's, so we're not removing all funds for pavement marking. There's a budget in FY twenty-six, and there's a budget unspent in FY twenty-five.
Okay, just, I, thank you. I just wanna make sure we weren't zeroing it out.
That's fine. Nope, we're not throwing out with the baby with the bathwater. Uh, if, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, now, I handed out a calculation, I'm still calling it preliminary 'cause it's not final, but, and, uh, I revised the calculation for the fund balance, um, just so it was maybe a little bit easier to follow where those numbers come from. Um, I can go through the whole thing if you'd like, or just talk about what, um, if you have any questions on it, I know you just got it, I'll go through it if you'd like. Um, at the end of the, end of FY twenty-five, we have two point nine, three nine, five one two in unassigned fund balance. Um, that is what we had prior than any changes throughout the year, and when you're looking at that, when you see I have, I reduced the unassigned fund balance by one point three five seven million, so if you were to look at the budget status reports that I give monthly, if you did that for the whole year, and you saw, we had expenses over revenues, so a negative, one point three, five, seven, oh, seven, one. So that is the net amount that we reduced our fund balance by in FY twenty-five.
Okay, questions for the treasurer on that? Did you follow that along? Pretty much, yep?
Yeah, just the one item, uh, Mary, just the one item that wasn't in our original draft was the, uh, if you could just explain the reduced assignment for opioid fund expenses.
I'll get there, okay? But I do wanna say that one point three five seven million, you're saying, oh, we, we overspent by that much? We had a lot of ARPA spending, so that was fund balance spending. It's reflected in the expenses, but we had already made appropriations for it, okay? So, when you see that, that's what's bringing that number down. We, a lot of things that we paid for, that one point three, that's negative, that's what, that's why it, it lands that way, okay?
Okay.
Okay, then I, um, have my, um, unassigned fund balance per the policy. I had handed out the policy set by the board, and we, this year, I hope to, like, formalize that policy, those minutes are old, um, but they do say that the board will set the unassigned fund balance between ten and fifteen percent based on revenue at the end of the fiscal year. So, that was, that is what I cleaned up with Lynn today. Um, I calculated the revenue reported. I took out the, um, transfers because they're not really revenue, so that's where I got that twenty-four million to start with, to make that calculation of ten percent to get to the two point four. A little bit different than what we went over yesterday, okay?
Okay, so I do have, uh, at least one question coming, so Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, so I went back and I looked at the audit that we got a copy of in the April seventh minutes, and in the auditor's report, it says the city policy is for the fund balance to be between nine percent and fifty percent.
And that is in there because we had, in the past, lowered to nine, but when you go back to those minutes, it's ten to fifteen.
Which minutes?
Um, I think that, they're old.
They're two thousand and ten.
It, um, I'm going back to when the board initially made this policy, it was September seventh, two thousand and ten, and it was approved, and this is what we followed, and it, and the board policy that was approved was ten to fifteen percent of your annual revenues, and that was what was, but at this meeting, we have, based on the, based on where we are, what we're looking for a tax rate, that's where the board has made some changes in the past, to lower to nine to provide more taxpayer relief. So, that's, uh, I think that's why that's in the audit.
So you're saying that the policy was created in twenty-ten?
Yes.
But the auditor in twenty-twenty-five wasn't aware of that policy?
He was, we spoke about it, and he put it in there because the board had approved nine percent in that year. Yep, I had seen that as well. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else up to this point? Okay, I think we're all set going forward.
Okay, thanks, um-
Yep.
So that's where you got that. So then you'll see, so then, um, you're gonna see some adjustments there. Those are adjustments that we make in the treasurer's office. We're really, when you think about it, we're two weeks, just two and a half weeks into the fiscal year, so we're guessing on a little bit. How much more revenue are we gonna post? How many more expenses are we gonna post? We keep our books open for sixty days, we're on a modified accrual, so, accounting, so for the first sixty days, we will take those expenses and throw them back if they're FY twenty-five. If we receive a revenue, we're also gonna count that if it's collected in those sixty days. So we have to, I do it based on what we saw last year, what we might expect, what we've had in the first two weeks. So I've made a few adjustments there, um, for those, um, items, uh, and, um, the board may, and I added back the opioid, I thought, since we had the meeting, the board approved the expenses that the police department had for the, um, situation table. So, those are restricted fund balance, the opioid funds, so I reduced those, I reduced those and added that to the fund balance. I wanna do as much as I can to bring this rate down, so that's what that is. I looked at those expenses, there are about seventeen thousand that were FY twenty-five expenses, so I, I didn't make that adjustment yet, I just made it for this, for purposes of this, okay?
Yep.
Um, and then in my, um, uh, proposal, based on the meeting, um, the other night, I have set aside two hundred and twenty thousand for the two positions in the police department, um, the thirty-four and thirty, to get us to the thirty-five, right?
Correct.
And, um, the other one that I kept in there was the sixty thousand dollars for the truck purchase that, um, that was just unspent in FY twenty-five, truck ordered, just not delivered. You have to post it based on when you have the, the trucks.
Delivery.
Delivery, it's based on the delivery, so, um, I, I wanted to roll that forward, but these two items are really up for the board discussion and approval.
Hello there, Matt, you there?
Hey, Dave, yes, Mike.
Okay, so we're, uh, into the meeting, um, I think everybody can hear you. Um, Mary's up going through, uh, some of the numbers, and, um, we're just gonna continue on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, before I go any further, uh, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, if somebody is either phoning in or up on the screen, when you take a vote, you have to do it by, um, roll call? Is that fair? Does everybody agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, alrighty, so we're all clear on that when I start calling for roll calls, that's why.
Yep.
Uh, you heard me, Matt?
I made it.
Okay, alright, okay. Uh, we just took a couple of preliminary votes, um, nothing substantial, we're getting to the meet of the, of the meeting here, uh, coming up, so. Alrighty, so, we're at the two, um, items that were up for discussion tonight. Uh, before we go any farther, I think this might be a good time to have-
The minute.
The committee report-
Okay.
From public safety about those two, uh, police officers.
Yep, so, public safety met on the fifteenth, members President Alderman Donahue, Whitcomb McClure, and Chairman Davis, also President Alderman Talbot, Tadio Clifford Kupali, Mayor Dungus, Treasurer Markowski, Chief Coquelin, and several members of the police department. The topic was to fund two police officers' positions numbering thirty-four and thirty-five. Via the FY twenty-five budget, it was funded to thirty-three, with an understanding that if the chief could fill the positions, we would try to find the funding. The chief is currently requesting thirty-nine positions be filled, and that discussion will continue with the mayor via the FY twenty-six, twenty-seven budgets. The cost per officer is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Several opportunities were explored for funding positions thirty-four and thirty-five. After much debate, the motion is to fund two positions totaling two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance. It was passed unanimously, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Debate on that motion, anyone?
So I think, uh, possibly another position may come out of the FY twenty-six budget, the budget we're currently in, um, depending on what overtime or other items are available, and that's something the chief and the mayor will be working on together.
As we go along through the year.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, very good. Chief, you wanna add anything to this? Are you all set? Okay, any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Twenty-one, we have to do a-
Oh, we have a roll call.
Oh, thank you very much. You got me, yeah. Alrighty, so, um, the motion's on the floor to, um, fund the two positions, two hundred and twenty thousand on the unassigned fund balance. The clerk shall call the roll.
Alderman Savage.
Yes.
Alderman Kupali.
Yes.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tadio.
Yes.
Alderman Donahue.
Yes.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes.
Alderwoman McClure.
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis.
Yes.
And Matt.
Matt.
Oh, Matt. Alderman Whitcomb.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's nine.
Okay.
Nine yes, zero no, motion passes, and thank you very much. Moving along a little too fast. Okay, so, the other issue, uh, before we, why don't we tackle right now, is the DPW request for the, uh, vehicle purchase, that's a truck. So, Alderwoman Davis?
So I would just say, Mr. Chairman, um, I think Commissioner Protivansky had, um, had the money in the budget, it was approved in the budget, it was ordered, it's a timing issue. I don't think it's an issue, um, of unspent, so I would encourage that the board, um, keeps that expense in the budget, in the, um, available for that purchase.
Okay, so, why don't we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I'll move to keep the request for the sixty thousand dollars for the DPW vehicle purchase.
Second. Okay, we need a roll call for the, uh-
Oh, right.
Suspension, but we'll get through that, I think. So, um, a motion is on the floor to approve the request for the vehicle purchase for sixty thousand. Uh, Alderman Whitcomb, you have anything on that, or you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, alrighty, clerk shall call the roll.
Alderwoman Savage.
Yes.
Alderman Kupali.
Yes.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tadio.
Yes.
Alderman Donahue.
Yes.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes.
Alderwoman McClure.
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Whitcomb.
Yeah.
Okay, nine yes, zero no, motion passes.
So moved.
Okay, so that takes care of those two things.
Just a point of clarification, I looked up-
Yes, please do.
The open meeting law, we only have to do a roll call if the vote isn't unanimous.
Okay.
If the vote is not unanimous.
Yeah.
That'll save us some time.
That'll save a little time.
That'll save a lot of time.
I mean, I don't know if you can see the weather, although I think it's raining out, so we might wanna take our time.
Then you go back to the roll?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for the help, I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's very good.
Take all the help I can get. Alrighty, so, that gets us down to, I think that's back to you, Mary, we got rid of those two.
Okay, um, so those were two things on that list that I provided. Um, I did that because we're, we really wanna keep that rate down, right? So, um, there were other things on that list, I'm not sure if you want to review them, speak about them, um, questions about those?
Okay, see if we have any further questions on the rest of the items that was before us, before we get to the, the bottom line.
Okay.
Anyone? Nope, you're all set.
Okay, yep, I'm all set, just wanted to mention that, so now, um-
Great.
I'm glad I went to the cemetery and watered flowers before I came.
So now, I would like to, so, the tax rate proposal that I have, and you see, I made two columns, one based on the voter-approved, one based on the budget that was approved by the board, right? So the tax rate that I will, I'm proposing is two point one five three six, okay? That's up from two point zero one seven two in FY twenty-five.
So, it's in the middle of the page, third from the bottom.
Yep.
Yeah, it's almost column two and four, they have the same rate, so, um, that's, that's the rate, and any questions on that? I wanna ask any questions before I ask for how much prior year we're gonna reserve to get to that rate, okay?
Okay, are we all on board up to this point?
Yep.
Okay, yep, alright.
Okay, so by charter, the, um, we're, we're required to set the tax rate based on the voter-approved rate, the voter, voter-approved budget, right? I, I worked with, um, because we had the error, I, I worked with our auditors, how can we, how can we manage this? The league had offered possibly that we actually collect the eight hundred thousand, then return it to the voters in the next, return it to the taxpayers in the next year. But because of the way we manage the city and the unassigned fund balance, we're able to reserve, we really just moved that eight hundred thousand from unassigned fund balance, we're gonna keep it in the balance sheet, we're gonna reserve it as part of that prior year fund balance. So we're bringing our fund balance by doing that to get to the rate. We are going to still have the rate of two point one five three six. Everything is essentially the same, except for you're going to assign those additional funds, um, making them kind of unavailable. What will happen is, we already know, right, that, that was not what our intention was with the budget. So, um, we won't be operating under that budget, in the, at the end of next year, those funds will just go back into the unassigned fund balance, and they'll be available for FY twenty-seven, okay? It was a kind of a clean way to do this and do the best thing for the taxpayer, okay? So normally, I would be asking, because we are, we set aside for taxpayer relief, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty dollars, but because we're operating on the voter-approved budget, a little confusing, but, um, the, the request would be to set aside one million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents as prior year fund balance on our balance sheet, to keep those available, so. So that would be my request of the board to, um, approve the assignment of prior year fund balance of the one million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, anyone have any questions before we get a motion on the floor? Okay, why don't we have a motion to, um-
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
So moved.
Been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, and a motion, as was requested, for a set aside from the prior year fund balance, one million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, now, um, based on that, I'm going to ask for the board's approval to set the municipal tax rate at two point one five three six. That is a six point seven percent increase over prior year.
Okay, alrighty.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alrighty, motion's been made to suspend the rules, it's been seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, motion passes.
And I will move to set the municipal tax rate at two point one five three six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alrighty, motion's been made and seconded, any debate on that? And Alderman Donahue?
Just a point, um, regarding the state education property tax fund, on the homestead side is actually going down this year slightly. It will affect this number, so that it will be less of a burden on the homeowner, uh, net, um, potentially more of a burden on the-
Business.
Non-homestead property owner, because that part of the state education, uh, tax rate increased.
Correct, yep, thank you for pointing that out. Alderman Gillis?
I just, I'm very, very concerned, especially in my neighborhood, which is mostly rental income, or rental units, those are considered commercial property, those are the people who are gonna get real hit, real hard underneath this non-homestead rate. So, the state of Vermont needs to really wake up, if they really wanna help the housing issue, they really need to buckle down on that number. I'm just making a comment, but it's, it's real hard that we're setting a rate here, we're, we're helping people in the town, but we're not helping the people who really need the help, and that's the rental units, so, just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate, uh, setting the municipal tax rate at two point one five three six? Seeing no further debate. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, okay, that's that.
Okay, so I wanna add for the record for everyone here, that for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, that increase is an increase of two hundred and four dollars and forty-eight cents per year on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment.
Okay?
Over last year.
That's on the municipal side.
Municipal side.
Municipal side, um-
Now, by statute, we have to set the education tax rate.
Yep, we have to approve the education rates, um, so I have those.
Okay.
And, um, let's see, I have, um, I thought I had it, Lynn. Okay, so the, um, okay, let me see if I get it right, uh, the homestead rate for FY twenty-six, um, is one point six zero five eight, and that is down from one point six seven four five in FY twenty-five, so, and then, the, you wanna, you wanna do the-
Yeah, why are we doing both?
Doing both, okay, so, in FY twenty-six, the non-homestead rate is one point nine two seven three, and that is up from one point eight five seven one.
Okay, this is, uh, by statute, we need to do this, so, uh, motion-
I'll move to suspend the rules.
It's been seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass, motion passes. Okay, so we're setting the homestead at one point six zero five eight, and the non-homestead at one point nine two seven three. I need a motion for that.
I'll move the motion.
Second, alrighty, any debate on that? Out of our hands, really. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, there, that was not unanimous, so we will need to, um-
Sorry, I just can't.
-a roll call on that motion. So, um, would the clerk call the roll?
I will.
Okay.
Alderman Savage.
Yes.
Alderman Kupali.
Yes.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tadio.
Yes.
Alderman Donahue.
Yes.
Alderman Gillum.
No.
Alderman Gillum.
No.
Alderwoman McClure.
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Whitcomb.
Here.
Eight, yes, one no, motion passes. Okay.
Okay, so just for the record, we had also prepared the rate, what, what the impact of that is, the combined rate. So if you have a home assessed at 150,000, the net increase for you is 101.43 because of that offset from the homestead rate going down, okay? And as you noted, the non-homestead rate is where it went up. So 150,000 assessment on non-homestead, the combined rate would increase your taxes by 309.78, so.
Okay, that's FYI.
FYI, yep.
Alright, so before we adjourn, I just want to thank you, Mary, for all the work that you've done on it.
Thank you.
I know that this is a little more complicated than it usually is, but I think we got there. So seeing no further business before us, a motion to adjourn will be in order.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We adjourned.